City Council Meeting of June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five is called to order at six oh one P M. Ms. City Manager, are any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Commissioner Lara.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lutz.
Yes, here.
Mayor Proten, Vice President Camacho.
Here.
Mayor President Garcia.
Here. We're gonna have the invocation by Councilmember Lara and then the flag salute will be followed. We have a fourth grader from McGee Elementary, Molly Lou Vienna, will follow after the invocation.
Everyone can please stand and bow your head. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with humble hearts, seeking your presence and guidance as we begin this city council meeting. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and we ask for your wisdom to lead with compassion, justice, and integrity. We lift up to you all those in our city who are facing fear, separation, and uncertainty. For the families enduring pain and suffering, those navigating hardship, displacement, or loss of stability, we ask for your comfort, protection, and peace. May we be instruments of your mercy, standing with the vulnerable, and working toward a more compassionate and united community. Grant us courage to do what is right, strength to uphold the dignity of every person, and hearts that mirror your love. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yes, sir.
Molly.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the community ship. My name is Molly Vienna. I'm going to fifth grade and attend McGee Elementary. It is my honor to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and join me as we begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly, thank you very much. If you can come up here, we do have a certificate of appreciation for you. And as Molly makes her way this way, Molly's keeping it all in the family. You may remember her brother Francisco, so we appreciate you, Molly, coming out and supporting us. Thank you very much, Molly. Councilmember Dr. Sanchez. Thank you again, Molly. You want to share anything?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here and letting me do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Now, that's a leader right there. Good job. You're gonna take a picture, the family? Thank you once again, Molly Lou Vienna from McGee Elementary, a fourth grader. Thank you very much for your leadership at such a young age. Thank you. With us, we have commissioners in attendance. From our Parks and Recreation, we have Kimberly Garcia and Aldo Macias Ariano from our sister city commission. Thank you both for your service in what you do here in the city. Thank you for attending. Before we move into closed session, I do wanna read a statement, if I may. We will be going into closed session in a moment. I want to take this moment to reaffirm the city of Peak Rivero stands with our residents. We are proud and an inclusive community, and we remain committed to ensuring the dignity, safety, and well-being of all who call Peak Rivero home. Considering recent immigration enforcement activity, we recognize the fear, the uncertainty to many families that they are feeling. Our city will continue to advocate for transparency, fairness, and due process. We are actively working with our partners, including the Rancho Unified School District and legal service providers, to ensure our community is supported, protected, and informed. Together, we will continue to stand for justice, unity, and compassion. If you may take us into closed session.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. It is now appropriate to proceed into closed session to discuss the two items listed in the closed session portion of the agenda. More specifically, item number one, public employee evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven subsection B one and conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six dot nine subsection D four.
Thank you.
...
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, the minutes should reflect that with all five members of the City Council present, both Item One and Item Number Two identified in the closed session portion of the agenda were discussed. With regard to both Item Number One and Item Number Two, Council was brief and direction was provided. It is now appropriate to proceed to the open portion, with the open portion of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Before we do move into the public hearing, I do want to read a statement. As stated prior to recessing into closed session, the City of Pico Rivera and each member of the Pico Rivera City Council takes very seriously the improper activities by federal agents and ICE personnel. The City Council wants its residents to know and understand the safety and protection of all people living and working in Pico Rivera is at the forefront of the actions and policies of the city and the City Council to clearly demonstrate the united position of this City Council, our city, in opposition to the conduct being taken against not only the people of our great city, but also against the action which is harming our families throughout the Los Angeles region and the state of California. Tonight, the City Council of the City of Pico Rivera has unanimously expressed its intent to join in a lawsuit to be soon filed by the City of Los Angeles against the federal government and its enforcement personnel, including ICE and related agencies. By doing so, the City of Pico Rivera will join its brothers and sisters of the City of Los Angeles and other neighboring cities in defending the rights of all residents and families impacted by this outrageous conduct. Therefore, as Mayor, I would like
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Before we get into public comments, Mr. City Manager, if you could just please share to make a motion to authorize our City Attorney's Office to take all the necessary steps to some updates.
Sure. Mayor, Members of the City Council, I'd like to provide an update regarding the
join in this litigation to be filed by the City of Los Angeles against the federal government
recent immigration enforcement activity that has taken place within our city. Last
and related parties to stop the unconstitutional activities being carried out by ICE and
week, ICE agents were confirmed to be active in Pico Rivera, and we are aware of a few individuals who were detained, including one resident, Adrian Martinez, who is also
other federal agencies. Do I have a second on this?
So move.
a U.S. citizen. He was arrested and charged, with a federal charge during an incident
Dr. Sanchez, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lara?
at our local Walmart. The city has been in touch with his family since the incident,
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
and will continue to support them in any way we can. Mr. Martinez has since been released
Yes.
Mayor Potem Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
This motion passes?
and now has legal representation. In the days following the incident, our community
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Motion passes, no worries.
responded peacefully to two separate protests were held, both of which were peaceful and
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move into the public hearing. We have Number
respectful expressions of concern and solidarity. The city coordinated closely with the Allee
One Item, Amendment for a Five-Year Local Housing Allocation Plan Memo, any memo from
County Sheriff's Department to ensure public safety and facilitate a safe space for residents
City Manager?
None.
to gather and voice their concerns. We're proud to say that there were no incidents
Written oral communications, City Clerk?
There were none received.
We'll go ahead and close it. Any discussion on the dais? If not, can I have a motion
or arrests during either demonstration. In response to broader concerns, the city has acted swiftly and compassionately. We've been pushing out multilingual informational resources
to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Move by Councilmember Lara, do I have a second?
Second.
across all city's social media platforms and through our website. We've created a dedicated
Second by Mayor Potem Camacho, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
video upload portal where residents can securely submit footage of any ICE activity they witness,
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
helping ensuring transparency and documentation. Additionally, we've been sharing important updates and support resources from our community partners, including the Arancho Unified School District, Supervisor Janice Hahn, Senator Barbara Chalera, Assemblymember Lisa Calderon, and Congresswoman Linda Sanchez, who has been highly active in engaging with federal agencies and advocating on behalf of our residents. Tonight, on the agenda, there's also an item proposing the establishment of a legal defense fund to provide support to Pico Rivera residents who have been wrongfully detained or impacted by immigration enforcement. The goal is to ensure access to representation and protect the due process rights of our community members while applying clear eligibility guidelines. I want to acknowledge a growing sentiment in the community. Many residents are asking how these types of federal enforcement operations can be allowed in our neighborhoods, especially when agents are often masked and carrying out operations without visible identification. This concern is shared by other cities across California, and we've been engaging in legal discussions around this very issue in coordination with the Allee City Attorney's Office and, of course, your vote tonight to enter into litigation with the City of Los Angeles in a lawsuit challenging the unchecked authority and tactics of federal immigration enforcement agents. To put this into context, I want to share an excerpt from a recent Allee Times article quoting Ed Obayashi, a well-known use-of-force expert in Northern California Deputy Sheriff. Quote, "Federal agents enjoy great autonomy and can do what they want in their official capacity. If they point a gun or take someone, and local police cannot stop in and interfere regardless of the circumstances. Federal agents are not subject to the same statutes as local police, namely Section 1983 Civil Rights Claims. The U.S. Supreme Court has repeatedly shielded federal agents from legal repercussions. This legal gap is why we believe joining this lawsuit is essential, not just symbolically, but as a tangible step forward towards advocating for greater accountability, oversight, and protection of our residents' civil rights." Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, moving along, we're gonna go ahead and move into public comments, and I'm gonna begin with the written comment first.
Mayor, we do have a speaker to cup.
Oh, that's right.
So at this time, I'd like to bring up Juliana Garcia. She has a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me at today's council's meeting. My name is Juliana Garcia. I am an immigration attorney. I've been practicing immigration law for 12 years. I was born and raised not in Pico Rivera, but in a city here in Southern California, San Ana, which is also facing a lot of the same issues that this community's facing. Demographics are very much the same, and I'm local here, born and raised here in Southern California. I graduated from UCLA. I'm a Bruin, and I got my bachelor's there, and I did law school up in the Bay at USF. And since then, I've been practicing immigration law here, really in Southern California, for 12 years. And I am essentially a defense attorney. So undocumented immigrants are my clients. I defend them in immigration court. I defend them at USCIS interviews with ICE and so forth. The City Manager asked me to speak today sort of about what's happening right now with the current situation and what sort of enforcement tactics we're seeing, and sort of really understanding this very complex system that we're entering and that we're really seeing live, really on social media, is how we're seeing a lot of these enforcement actions happening at different levels. And really, the immigration system is comprised of, for the majority of these three agencies, which is USCIS, which is the Citizenship and Immigration Services, Customs and Border Protection, and Immigration and Customs Enforcement. And each agency has these separate roles. ICE's role is interior enforcement. So they are in charge of managing arrests of folks that are undocumented, placing people in detention, and essentially commencing what is called removal proceedings for them to appear within immigration courts. You, we're seeing a lot of folks that are, or a lot of officers that are not identifying themselves, but we're also seeing some officers that wear jackets that say ICE or ERO, and that's enforcement, removal operations. And then we're also seeing some of them wear jackets that say HSI, which is the Homeland Security Investigations. And so there's all like sub-departments, essentially, like within ICE. Customs and Border Protection is really the enforcement at the border. And so it's what we see when we're entering the United States at any of the ports of entries, and checkpoints that are established within 100 miles of the border. However, right now, we're seeing that there's a lot of coordination between both agencies, and they have both been allowed to come into our communities and essentially detain some of these undocumented folks within our communities. USCIS is the agency that reviews applications to become residents, applications to become citizenship, to become citizens, I'm sorry, and other applications for relief, such as more like quasi-status, which we see as like DACA individuals, people that have TPS, and that's like really prominent, I think, in a lot of the communities here in Southern California. And they also have the authority to deny your application. And for the most part, what we're seeing right now is that if they do deny your application, chances are very high that they're gonna issue something that's called a notice to appear, which is a notice for you to appear in immigration court. And so really, we're seeing enforcement actions happening at different levels. I think what is most alarming, I mean, everything is alarming, but I think what is most alarming and what we're seeing is really what's happening on the streets. When this large enforcement operation started happening here in Los Angeles, it started with the workplace raid at this apparel company. And I think once they really saw the community response, what we've been seeing most recently has been the public arrests, right? They're unfortunately referred to as like low-hanging fruits, right? They're focusing on individuals that are working outside, that are working in public spaces, because it's easier for them to establish that there's reasonable suspicion. So all they have to do is have reasonable suspicion that somebody is undocumented, and then that's when they can go forward with a detention. And so unfortunately, one of the things that's happening, and what I've been seeing a lot, is that once people realize that immigration is nearby, they start running. And that, the fact that they start running away gives them reasonable suspicion to detain them and then go forward with the arrest. We're seeing a lot of unmarked vehicles, like was previously said, with officers that are not wearing badges, using excessive force, and they're definitely, you know, using tactics that are in violation of the Fourth Amendment and that are in violation of the Fifth Amendment. And I think that that is what has been the most outrageous for us to see. And so I'm glad that the city is thinking about what are some of the legal recourse's that we can have, you know, at this point to try to protect our communities. On the legal aspect, sort of what attorneys are doing is once we do see that there, whenever somebody's arrested, the officers have to fill out a form. It's an immigration form. It's called an I-213. And so they have to state, you know, how did they conduct the arrest, and was the arrest conducted in accordance to the Fourth and the Fifth Amendments? And oftentimes, we might even be able to file motions to suppress some of the evidence that they do obtain from an arrest because it's a violation of the Fourth Amendment. So there are some recourse's that we do have, you know, even when we see some of these videos of, you know, very much violations of people's Fourth Amendment rights. And right now, what we're seeing on the streets also, they're focusing on people that are working in public spaces, such as gardeners, street vendors, people that are like car washes and sort of are out in the open. What we're seeing in the courts, and this was reported, and maybe it didn't get enough attention, but what we are seeing in the courts, unfortunately, the courts are governed by the Department of Justice. And so unfortunately, they're not independent. And the courts, for many years, have tried to become independent. For whatever reason, they haven't been able to. So they have to follow directives. And what happened was that the Board of Immigration Appeals issued a very bad decision. And essentially, what they're doing is that they're expanding their power for expedited removals, which typically applied of people that have been in the country for less than two years. So what we're seeing in migration courts is that folks that have been here for less than two years, the government attorneys are filing, are making motions to close their removal proceedings so that they could place them in expedited removal proceedings. So they're closed their current asylum case, and then they pin the officers that are waiting right outside the courtroom to be detained as they're walking out. And so those are sort of the images and the videos that you might have seen online. And unfortunately, once they're placed in removal proceedings, because of this BIA decision by the Board of Immigration Appeals, they're not able to post bond. And so they have to fight their case detained. And so the idea here is to make people so miserable that they sign their own voluntary departure order. I mean, that is really like sort of the intent of what's happening in the courts. I think what is gonna affect a lot of the community here in Pico Rivera and in other areas in Southern California is what I call quiet enforcement, which is over the last probably 10 years, there was a program in the courts called prosecutorial discretion, where they said, hey, you're not, you don't have any criminal convictions, you're not dangerous, you have ties to the community, we're gonna close your case. We don't wanna deport you right now. So what's happening is that these cases from over the last 10 years are being re-calendered. They're getting placed back in the docket. And so that raises a lot of issues about due process because a client, I might have lost contact with my client from the last 10 years. They might not have updated their address or their phone number. They might not even know that their case is being re-calendered and they have a hearing. So that is, I think, one of the things that is missing in a lot of the Know Your Rights information that we're giving to the public, is making sure that if they're, if they ever had a case that was closed with immigration court, there is an online system that they could check, and they could check periodically just to make sure that their cases didn't be re-calendered without them knowing. Of course, the attorneys were getting, I mean, there are some reports from some attorneys that have been practicing for longer than I have, saying they got 50 motions in one day, like that being re-calendered, you know. So those are the sort of different ways that they're coming at us to really try to enforce and undo with some of the programs that had been beneficial for individuals. The other enforcement actions that we're seeing is with USCIS. So the USCIS offices are located in San Bernardino, Chatsworth, downtown and San Ana. And so typically, when somebody goes in for their green card interview, you know, we, and obviously, if the case was handled by an attorney and the person had a history with immigration, we wouldn't know whether they had an outstanding removal order. But there are people that either do the case by themselves or do it with a notario. And they don't know that a long time ago, they had a removal order, and so now those people are getting picked up. So USCIS pings ICE and says, hey, this person's coming in for the interview. They have a removal from such and such state, and then they get detained and placed in detention at that point. Now, what is completely outrageous, that is unprecedented that we haven't seen, is people that are visa overstays. So there have been reports of folks in this area, in downtown and Chatsworth particularly, where their clients were picked up for being just a visa overstay that traditionally, that hadn't been something that would place them in danger of detention. The Department of State is canceling the student visas, particularly, they're targeting any students that are, they're monitoring their social media, essentially. Any sort of pro-Palestine or anti-Trump views on social media has been easy for them to cancel those. And what's happening with CBP at the moment, because this is a big question that a lot of people, including residents in the area, might say, well, they're even scared to travel, right? Because they hear all this news about what's happening at the airports. And really, the people that are at risk are a couple categories that I listed here. Most recently, with this new administration, they've really focused on people that have VAWA applications. VAWA is the Violence Against Women Act, and it mainly applies to people that have been abused by a spouse or a child. And so that is one of the sort of humanitarian applications that is available to become residents. It also gives them, gives them the ability to travel abroad. And so people that have been using that advanced parole permit, upon return, have been sent to secondary and questioned about the extent of their application regarding the abuse, which raises a lot of questions about, about, you know, humanitarian issues, obviously, on addressing that type of abuse, and whether those officers are trained and equipped to handle those types of applications. LPRs with convictions, that has always been the issue. Anytime a resident has any sort of serious conviction, they always, they've always, at the airports, have been reviewing that. That is not something that's new. So, you know, in these situations, we advise people to check with an immigration attorney, just to make sure. Not all convictions make you deportable. There are certain things that make you deportable. Not everything makes you deportable. And so, but there's definitely a lot of fear, and it is advisable for people to check with an immigration attorney. Now, we've, you know, I listed here sort of the Know Your Rights information that has been widely distributed regarding what our Fourth Amendment rights are. And they really apply in these different areas. In your home, you do not have to open the door. You can slide your Know Your Rights card under the door for them to see. They need to have a warrant. It needs to be signed by a judge, and it has to have your name. There's this recent settlement that I think is gonna be, become final in August, where I think as a result of this is where we started to see less of the daughter-door enforcement actions that they started with when they came to the Los Angeles area. And basically, what the settlement says is things that they should have already known, which is to follow the Fourth Amendment, so they cannot identify themselves as saying, hey, we're from the police. We're here to investigate a crime. They cannot say that they are doing a parole check. They cannot say that there's some sort of danger in the community, and that's why they need to come into your house. They cannot show you a picture of like, hey, we're looking for this guy. We wanna talk to you, and it's a picture of somebody else. So there's like certain tactics that they've been using that this settlement essentially limits those types of tactics. It's still in the works, and it applies in this area. Now, this is an example, and it might be hard to see, but this is an example of what a proper warrant would look like that will allow them to enter your home. And it has to be issued from the United States District Court, signed by the judge, as opposed to anything from the Department of Homeland Security. Now, workplace raids, I think, are, you know, another one of the tactics that's probably gonna increase over the next weeks. And similarly, they need to have a warrant to enter the premises, and it's to be signed by a judge. And individuals that are in this situation where immigration shows up to their work have the same Fourth Amendment rights. They can, they have the right to remain silent. They have the right to talk to an attorney. And one of the first things that I tell people in these situations is to not run again, because they are gonna say, they're gonna raise reasonable suspicion that they are undocumented and will go after them. But the other thing, and the other area where I think there's room, room for improvement in terms of the community response, is for small businesses, and really, any company to have a restricted area. So they, and they have to post it. They have to post something like what's on this slide, and have an area that's designated as a private area. And so the employer or the owner of the small business can assert that they are not allowed to go past a particular area, a particular room, and they can move the operation sort of like behind that wall or behind that door. And I think that that there is, for, I think that there's room for improvement in terms of the community response to help small businesses understand this section of the law. Now, what are some of the other things that, that we can be advising sort of employers and small businesses is to designate a staff member, whether it's the owner or some sort of other director within the company as the point person to talk to immigration when they do show up, if they do show up. And that, they also have the right to talk to an attorney and to ask the questions to their own immigration attorney. Now, in a public space, the, the, the number one thing that, again, I repeat, is to advise the community members to not run, right? Because I've seen so many videos of people running. I mean, I think I saw a video where there was two gentlemen, three gentlemen at a bus stop, and two of them ran, and the other guy was on his phone. And they like immediately went after the two that took off. Because that, it'll be easier for you to assert your right to remain silent and assert your rights with the red Know Your Rights cards in that situation. It's also important to advise folks to not be carrying false documents, because that's just gonna raise a lot of issues. And so the employer or the owner of the small business can assert that they are not allowed to go past a particular area, a particular room. And they can move the operation sort of like behind that wall or behind that door. And I think that that there is, for, I, I, I think that there's room for improvement in terms of the community response to help small businesses understand this section of the law. Now, what are some of the other things that, that we can be advising sort of employers and small businesses is to designate a staff member, whether it's the owner or some sort of other director within the company as the point person to talk to immigration when they do show up, if they do show up. And that they also have the right to talk to an attorney and to ask the questions to their own immigration attorney. Now, in a public space, the, the, the number one thing that again, I repeat is to advise the community members to not run, right? Because I've seen so many videos of people running. I mean, I think I saw a video where there was two gentlemen, three gentlemen at a bus stop and two of them ran and the other guy was on his phone. And they like immediately went after the, the two that took off. Because that, it'll be easier for you to assert your right to remain silent and assert your, your rights with the, the red know your rights cards in that situation. It's also important to advise folks to not be carrying false documents because that's just going to raise a lot of issues once they do place them in immigration proceedings. The other, the other part of this that I, that I do tell people is not to panic. And once they put hands on you to cooperate as much as you can, I think it's a really dangerous territory with the Lake and Riley Act. The Lake and Riley Act allows just for an arrest of having hit a police officer or having assaulted a police officer to subject you to inadmissibility or denying you certain immigration benefits. And so in these situations where we're very tense, you know, I do advise clients, just if, if they've, if they're already arresting you, just cooperate as much as you can. You know, assert your right to remain silent. Wait until they process you to talk to your family. Now, there are certain protections that we currently do have, which is the SB 54, which is the Sanctuary City law. Now, this Sanctuary City law says the police is not going to cooperate with ICE officers. To a certain extent, they do cooperate on very serious crimes. And so that's, right now, I think that's what we're grappling with. Like, how can we use this law? And how can we use some of the other things that we might have in the books to address the situation that we're having here? And we're finding, you know, that there needs to be this new, the No Secret Police Act, which was introduced just this month, that would make it the misdemeanor for law enforcement to cover their faces. There's also the California Pino Code, which states that any, any peace officer is required to wear a badge or to at least have some display of their identification with their number and name on it. And so those are the things that definitely like we have to take into consideration and how we can, whether that even applies to the federal officers. I think that's what we're grappling with right now, like legal counsel on these issues. It's complex because we're dealing with like the state law and we're dealing with the federal officers. Now, in terms of the community response, one of the things that I tell people is to prepare for the long game. When somebody gets detained, it doesn't mean they're going to get deported. When somebody gets detained, it means they're gonna, they're, they're supposed to get the process. They're supposed to have the right to fight their case. And a lot of the people that live in our community will be able to win their case in immigration court. And so a lot of people are scared that if they get detained, they're going to get deported. That doesn't apply to everybody. That might apply to people that have deportation orders, which I can, I'll talk about that at the end. But have a plan. Have a plan. You, we need to be in this in the long game. And we need to zoom out a little bit so that we can help the community prepare for what's to come. And that includes, you know, making sure that if you have an immigration attorney, that your spouse, that your sister, that somebody knows to contact that immigration attorney, that immigration attorney has your file, has all your important documents. Having a caregiver's affidavit is also something that I don't see as enough, is talked about enough. A caregiver's affidavit is not, is a document where you can allow somebody for a period of time to have the authority to pick up and drop off your kids from school, to pick up and drop off your kids from medical appointment. You're not granting or giving up your parental rights. So it's something under that. And so, you know, assisting the community and having those things prepared. Having valid passports for your US citizen children is another, one of those things that I also advise. Because in the event of a deportation, you need to have your kids be able to travel and reunite with you. And having a little piggy bank for possible having to pay for bond and legal fees is the other piece of it. Locating family members is this online detainee program locator. Because of the number of arrests that we've seen recently, there's been some people that haven't even showed up on the detainee locator. And usually what I advise people is start calling the local detention centers. Either the downtown, the downtown one, there's a one in Adelanto. And then there's several that are sort of like in the San Diego area. And then just start calling them directly and looking for your family member if you cannot find them on the online detainee locator. However, as soon as your family member gets detained and as soon as you find out where they're at, even if you haven't talked to them, you can file your bond motion. So that's the other piece of this, is what happens after your family member gets detained? And what I say is the fight is not over. You can file a motion as soon as you know they're in Adelanto, even if you haven't had a chance to talk to them. You can file your bond motion right away and get the process started right away. The bond is a minimum of $1,500. They're going to get to go before a judge. The judge is going to look at how long they've been here, whether they have a job, what type of community and family ties they have, whether they're a flight risk, if they've had any other criminal proceedings where like they might not have showed up for a hearing, et cetera. So those are the types of things that, that a judge is looking at when they're looking for bond. Now, you know, where can the community help? Being able to write letters of good moral support for your, you know, from, from friends, from family, from employers, from the church. Those are the, you know, those are the things that help the judge be, be able to assess the situation with this person. What type of community member are they? Are they a flight risk? Now, once they're in, once they are released, they're going to be given something that's called a notice to appear, which is appear in immigration court. And they're going to be given a hearing date. Over the years, the courts here in Southern California have expanded. They, there used to be only one court on Olive Street in the Jewelry District in downtown. Now, we have, we have one there, the federal building, 300 North Los Angeles Street. We have one over by LAX, Santa Ana, and Van Nuys are, are the immigration courts that we're now seeing. Now, many folks in the area are going to qualify for something called cancellation of removal. It applies to people that have lived here for more than 10 years and have either a US citizen or resident spouse, child or parent, and can establish good moral character amongst other things that they have to establish. But that's when I tell people to look at the long game and that the fight's not over. They might come out of this with a residency card, essentially. Now, I listed here some available legal resources. A lot of, one of the great things about this area is that there are so many competent immigration attorneys who are probably first generation, Spanish speaking like myself. And we're blessed because other areas of the country do not have that. Other areas of the country might have like one immigration attorney in the neighborhood. And we have so many great colleagues that have been doing a lot of work for many years and, and, you know, across the board. And there's also a lot of great nonprofits. But the nonprofits, I'm sure, will also be, you know, are trying to provide as many resources as possible. I listed here some of the bond funds. I think this is great. And I think this is very much what the community needed to do, which is start to create these funds for people that cannot afford the bond that they're going to be, that they're going to be issued. And, and so this is, you know, I've seen a lot of fundraisers for these funds. And so I think that that's the other piece of, of this fight that didn't exist before. And as a result of these raids, we, we've been seeing that there's been a lot of more nonprofits that have created these funds. I added here my contact information. There's a lot to talk about. The other piece of this that I wanted to talk about, that I didn't include a slide on here, was about what our rights are as US citizens with ICE because we have been seeing that they have also been detaining US citizens. And just like undocumented people, US citizens, we also have a Fourth Amendment right and our Fifth Amendment rights to remain silent. But these detentions that we're seeing about US citizens are coming under, I guess, the umbrella of, of, or where they're alleging that there was an assault on the police, on the, on the officer. And so they're allowed to arrest you if you're committing a crime, essentially. And they're allowed to press federal charges against a person for assaulting a federal officer. And so as a community, one of the things we can do aside from all the great things that are already happening on the ground is making sure that we are holding them accountable. We have the right to film them. We have the right to be present during one of these detentions or arrests as long as we're not interfering with the operation. And so, you know, keep chugging along in terms of that. But I'm open for questions and anybody has any particular questions about anything I talked about.
I just want to thank you for this comprehensive presentation. Really good. Steve, do we have a copy of this?
Yes, we do.
Information?
Yeah, I'm going to share it. There's some information we don't have on our website that we'll be posting and we'll continue to work with her to.
Awesome. That was, I was going to go. Any questions from the colleagues?
Thank you so much. This was really a comprehensive, and, and I like that there's some hope, right?
Absolutely. There's a lot of hope. Yeah, there's a lot of hope. We gotta look at the bigger picture. And, you know, that's the message that I give to my clients because I've been, you know, dealing with this not just now, but for 12 years. And, and we have to sort of be prepared for the long run and, and, and for the marathon here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Of course.
Councilmember?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Geralena. I really loved the detail that you provided for us because it gives a reference point for people to watch the video and, you know, share it with their family members or their neighbors, anybody they know. You had mentioned the red cards. And I'd love to see if we can get those red cards distributed at our public events, you know, movies in the park, concerts in the park that we have in, in the upcoming months. I think that would be a great opportunity to distribute with those that need it. And I know a lot of the videos that have been posted on social media have a lot of. Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Where we have some of the residents that are extremely concerned and interfere with the investigations, but then that puts them in a position where they now have to litigate and get legal counsel to protect them, to get out of custody. Do you recommend that the residents interfere with, with, with an investigation? And put themselves at risk as well?
Well, I, I think it's a blurry line that we're definitely starting to see how that's going to develop. But I, I, I don't recommend for the residents to interfere. There are ways to protect the individual to a certain extent, right? Without interfering. So, you know, talking to them and letting them know, hey, you can remain silent. You don't have to tell them your name. Asking the officer to identify themselves and getting that information, filming the, you know, videotaping with, with your phones, you know, the, the interaction. But interfering and, and getting in the way and putting hands on the officer in what way, I think it's going to expose the individual to liability. And that, we might start to see more cases where they start pressing charges against people for that. I think that's a, that's a blurry line. And that's, you know, definitely something that we need to keep our eyes out on.
Is there a recommended distance that someone should stay away from a federal officer to, to prevent being in, put in that position where they can actually be hurt themselves? What is a recommended distance, but still able to help out, say, a family member or a friend or a neighbor?
I don't think that there's anything that stipulates like a, a particular distance. I think that if somebody, if they do press charges against, against an individual, they would have to prove those things, right? Like, they would have to prove, hey, they were too close to me or they put hands on me or they grabbed my gun or things of that nature. Because this is an area there where they're giving a lot of discretion, unfortunately, the federal officers.
So should we use just general common sense? Just like with general peace officers, like our sheriff and local.
Absolutely.
Departments where, don't touch the officers.
Right.
Interfere with them.
Absolutely.
But express the rights of the person you're trying to defend.
Right, right. And ask them, yeah, verbally. And ask them to identify themselves and to give us your name, your badge number. Which agency are you from? Because I mean, the fear is if, you know, there, if there are marked cars, mask men's and mask men's, you can't see their faces, they're not identifying themselves. How do we know this isn't like a fake kidnapping, right? That's sort of the, the line we're in. And I think this is the most, probably the scariest part of some of these public detentions that we've been seeing. But use the same common sense that you would with any police officer, for sure.
Which is don't put your hands on them.
Don't put your hands on them. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Dr. Sanchez. Mayor Brodeman.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm hopeful and I'm optimistic as well as that there's a, a, I guess, light at the end of the tunnel, if you will. You know, and it's easy for us to say.
Right.
But those individuals and those families who are currently have their family in a detention center as we speak and/or are fearing for their lives because they cannot go out. So I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic, but it's, you know, it's, it's a caveat that it's hard to describe because of those who are currently in that experience.
Absolutely.
And it's also, you know, for us to recognize that, you know, you're right. I mean, just like we were always taught and know that law enforcement comes in, you don't interfere with their investigation. And I think, you know, we come a long way as, as, as a civilized society that law enforcement itself has learned how to deal with the civilians. But also civilians have also learned how to react to law enforcement as well. And what we've seen, though, has been the complete opposite. We've regressed to the 60s. You know, all I, all I need now is to see a bunch of canine dogs chasing people or water holes being put out there in front of people as to contain. So it's, so when I see people reacting, it's not necessarily a reaction to, let me be an aggressor. But rather, when I see, like, we had an incident here in Pico Rivera, the Adrian Martinez, the Vigo Hu. All he was doing was trying to, as an elderly man, armed marked vehicles, armed marked identification. Who do you know who these are? And all this individual was trying to do is say, protect this elderly man, as we're all instantly taught to do. If we see an elderly person being abused, we're going to defend. And shame on you. If you see an elderly person being abused and you do nothing, you walk away. So I think that's just a natural reaction. Obviously, we're also learning that, well, federal agents act and, and are, are protecting on the whole different spectrum short of what we've been, we've learned to do. So it, it, I just want to put it into context that it's easy for us to make the simple descriptions of what to do and not to do. But in, in, and what we're seeing, that's not quite the case. As you mentioned, the Fourth and Fifth Amendment are being violated.
Yeah.
Blatantly. You know, there's racial profiling happening just because you look brown.
Right.
And you look like you might not be documented, you go after them. So I just want to put it into context that there's a lot of issues that we are now kind of looking and, and, and making judgment calls on that. And, and, yeah, we have to refrain from getting involved, refrain from interfering. But these are individuals who aren't marked. So a question to you, and you mentioned as far as whether it be ICE identification or, or all the different acronyms that they're being used. What law is in place that, you know, law enforcement, our sheriff department, they have their badge, they have their name, they have, they identify their IDs. But does federal government work under a whole different premise? Or are they just doing it now based on the circumstance that you're aware of?
Yeah. I, I'm not aware that there's a equivalent, let's say, to the, the new bill that's being introduced in California, right? On the federal, on the federal scale, on the federal level. So it, it is why we're seeing sort of like this situation happening where we're seeing people that are officers that are not identifying themselves. I also think that it's part of their tactics, right? They're violating the Fourth and the Fifth Amendment rights of citizens and non-citizens. So, and, and these things are happening. And really, our recourse is the courts, right? That's why they filed the, that kid versus Gnome lawsuit because they were violating people, violating people's Fourth Amendment rights when they were using these tactics like saying, hey, we're the police. I am, I'm coming from LAPD because I need to investigate, you know, a robbery that happened to your neighbor. And it was just a ruse to get them to open the door. And that was a violation of the Fourth Amendment that they, they ended up filing this, this settlement or this class action here. So those are, I think that's where we need to be thinking about ways in which we can bring, bring some litigation to stop them from these tactics. Those, you know, that's one of the, one of the things that, to, to think about.
Are you familiar with the two legislative bills that are going on right now as to enforcing that all law enforcement?
Yeah.
And it's, I think, a reflection of what's went on.
Right.
Identify yourself, you can't wear a mask. I mean, and, you know, just recently, a colleague of ours from the City of Hunter Park made a statement as to, you know, I'm going to direct our law enforcement to identify those stuff. Can you tell me a little bit about what's your perspective of those legislative bills and those types of directives that are quote unquote brought up by individual city?
So there, there is the Pino Code that I listed on here, which is a Pino Code regarding California. And so I think that that's probably where the mayor of Hunter Park is probably basing his decision to direct police officers to enforce that Pino Code. If you're step foot in California, you have to follow laws in California, which includes identifying yourself. And so I think that there probably is a legal basis to for the city to enforce at least just a portion of identifying yourselves. least just a portion of identifying yourselves. I don't think that the Pino Code reaches the extent of saying that they cannot be masked, but at least identifying the, the agency and their name. And so, that's, that's the piece where I think a lot of cities are going to be looking at that Pino Code. I think it was up there, let me go back to it.
So, do you think there's validity there? I mean, because?
I do think there's some validity there, because anybody that's here in California has to follow the Pino Code. Let's see, where was it?
I mean, and I wanted to ask this, and if I may, Mayor?
Please.
I just want to play this out, because, you know, as we've heard, these articles came out, people are asking us, well, we should do the same. And this is a question maybe through our city manager, and maybe our, our captain as to, how do you, how do you enforce that? I mean, you know, law is based on interpretation, right? And that's your opinion, and trust me, I, I want to enforce this as much as I can, and I want to find as many tools as I can that we can enforce as well.
Right.
But I also don't want to give our community a false hope either, that somehow we have the magic ability to, to do these things. So I want, since you're here, I want to play this on. How do you enforce that? And I'll, I'll bring the, our city manager and our, our captain into that conversation. I give, we give directive to do so, how do you, how do you do that? If, based on this quote-unquote legal code?
Right. I, I, I don't think that we have enough within, like, the California laws to solve the situation that we're seeing, right? That's why they had to propose this legislation, because there's a gap in, in our current laws as to how to address the situation. But I think that if we do follow the California Pino Code, it's up here, the 830 dot 10, then, then a, a police agency, a police officer can ask the agents and say, hey, where, what's your name, what's your badge, what agency are you coming from? But that's really the extent of it. So, if they were to verify the identity of the officer, then the officer is going to go forward with the arrest as a detention of the individual and, you know, and then, and place the individual within the immigration enforcement, or the immigration courts. So, it, it, it really doesn't achieve maybe the, the result that, that you're looking for.
I'm just trying to play this out, because again, okay, captain comes up to him, and deputies walked up to this officer, come in, and I need you to identify yourself, we've seen how they've been acting.
Right.
They're, from what we understand, they're a bunch of contractors that are being paid by the person, and they're just dismissing all laws. So what, they tell the captain, you know what, shoot, you, I don't have no authority, what does the captain, what is, what is the repercussion? Well, can the captain do from a legal perspective? Say, you know what, if you don't identify yourself, then I'm now going to enforce my legal authority as the law enforcement, the local government, and now what am I do? What do I do? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but this is the question?
Yeah, yeah.
That you're presenting to, you're bringing some law information to us, which is good, but I also want to make sure that we have a dialogue that allows the community to understand what we can and cannot do.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I think that the, all you're really able to do is, I mean, there'll be two scenarios, in that either the officer identifies themselves, or the officer refuses to, in which case there might have to be a citation of that, you know, particular officer, if they refuse to do that. But that's really the extent of it. It's really the extent of it, and that's, I think that's why they introduced these, these new proposals or these new laws, because there's a gap currently, it was an area that we weren't foreseeing that this was going to happen, and that we needed to have this, these types of protections within, within California law.
Mayor Protem, if I may suggest, perhaps coordinate a meeting with all of us to really get into the nuts and bolts of this, and really have a true dialogue, and really see where we'll take it to the next step.
Absolutely.
But before I, you start a question, before I do, councilmember?
And, and Mayor, I, I just to conclude, I appreciate that, I think there's a lot of discussion to be had.
For sure.
I appreciate your, your comprehensive presentation, it's needed, it's timely, we're all learning, we've never been in this situation before.
Right.
We would like to do more for our community, and we're going to do everything we can as a community, as a council, as a city, to support all our residents, you know, no matter what their legal status is here. But we also have, we're in a whole different time, and we want to make sure that as we move forward, I'm going to see a lot of laws and legislation come to be here in California, but if it doesn't apply to federal government, you know, I want to make sure that we're doing what we're doing to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, if agents are creating their own situations that put them in a harm's way, and law enforcement is there to protect them, we get it, like they will protect, but there's a turning point, there's a fine point, where at the end of the day, at what point do we protect our citizens too?
Absolutely.
From being harassed and/or impersonators. We just saw congressional members being killed in Minnesota because of impersonators. We can see that happening, and we want to make sure that we're doing this that is protecting our community first, our residents of Pico Rivera.
A hundred percent.
Steve, if you may just, I want to follow up real quick before I turn it over to councilmember Laura. Small business rights?
Yes.
That we get our chamber involved, our business community, what's next? What's coming, what's turning the corner?
Yeah. Just real briefly, if I am a U.S. citizen, if I was born here, it's my understanding I do not have to carry any paperwork to prove that.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
If I was not born here, and if I had a green, green card, DACA, you have to carry your paperwork at all times.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you. My other question, just real briefly, in thirty seconds, we're seeing a lot of detentions or a lot of arrests taking place in parking lots, Lowe's, Home Depot, grocery stores. Are these, is that considered private property? Or is that considered pri- private property, but yet public right-of-way property? And if it is public right-of-way property, if we were to pass an ordinance in the city that said, hey, we have a toll to enter the parking lot, five cents, a penny, whatever, then it becomes private property and ICE cannot enter our parking lots? I say this because our businesses are being hurt. How do we protect our parking lots?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that's an excellent point. I, I do think that if there's no signage, it's going to be considered a public space, the parking lot. But I think that if you add the, whatever, the booth with, you know, prohibiting the entrance and adding a sign that this is private property, and only authorize customers who pay ten cents, you know, or a dollar to enter, then I think that is a very smart idea to make it so that they cannot enter for those purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, again, thank you very much for this wealth of information, Juliana.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me, and thank you for all the work that you do. It's really amazing to hear from our representatives, you know, that, that you're doing this work to help the community in every way possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to begin with public comments, and I'll start with the written comment first. It was from Barbara Gonzalez, a longtime resident, ISOD of Pico Rivera. Our first public speaker we have is Renee Rothrock Singleton.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Renee Rothrock Singleton. I've been a resident of Pico Rivera since 1977, and have been a homeowner here since 1987. I'm addressing the issue of the accessory dwelling unit approvals for our city. Currently, there is an approved ADU at 8335 Passance Boulevard in the front yard of the home. I believe the municipal code for our city has been misinterpreted by our city management staff. This was approved and is built. It is an eyesore. It sets a precedent for others to follow and/or opens up our city to liability. What happened to the property neighborhood setback regulations? I know it's twenty feet, but this is less than that. No one on our side of the street or block has anything built out that far, and the ADU appears to be less than twenty feet from the street. No other city that surrounds us would allow an ADU in the front yard. When did our board vote on this, or allow this? You are the Oversight and Decision Committee for Municipal Codes. Myself and my neighbors that I have spoken to do not like what the city has decided to approve. We understand there is a housing shortage, but this home had ample room to build in the backyard, which met the original intent for approving ADU development in LA County. I have sent emails to the city manager, Steve Carmona, and the City Planning and Building Department. City planning states this is all legal. I have not heard back from the city manager. This is bad for our city and our property values. I ask you to investigate and clarify as you move forward on this matter with a response to residential property owners in our city. If these types of units are allowed to be built, we as citizens will need to begin a communication campaign and maybe a petition to move forward on this issue. I thank you, and I ask that I be notified of any public notifications or announcements about this matter. And I also want to state, I was speaking to someone just, who was here a little while ago, who said that the state ordinance or HCD development doesn't allow ADUs, their accessory dwelling units, the intent was to have them at the rear of properties, and they're not to be larger than the actual residential primary property, which in this case, the ADU is larger than the primary house. Please consider the aesthetics of our neighborhoods and the interpretation of the municipal codes that the state has put forth. And I know that you, as members of the City Council, have the ability to change those municipal codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. The city manager, could you please follow up?
Yes, Mayor.
On this? Thank you. Next, we have Yolanda Martinez.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Yolanda Martinez. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've been a resident of Pico Rivera since 1992. I am a recently retired LA County employee for thirty-seven years. So I really like to attend these meetings, and I have done so before, previously, with other members. Right now, I'm speaking in regards to a problem that I just received. I've been dealing with a lot of medical issues, not only for me, but only, I also take care of my sister. I unexpectedly receive a water bill of eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. And when I call the city to inquire why, what happened, somebody who ever answered the phone told me, this isn't the first time we sent you, we left you a notice on your door. Why won't I not check into that? I did not receive that notice. I know that my mind, especially right now with the stressful situations, it's bad, but I would inquire about a notice in my door that a bill in the meter was going crazy, which is worse. It was going crazy, I had a small leak, which we are trying to take care. However, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars for a senior citizen, really unexpectedly, and telling me, well, I gave you a notice, and this isn't the first time. The previous bill was three hundred and seventy-five, so you should have known. Really? I should have known? I pay my taxes. I've been a homeowner since 1992. I reside in this city, and I, I understand that I have to pay my taxes, and I'm never late. So I am here to request or propose that there should be a way to informing people other than I left you a little note in your door. Other cities do, they have apps. How about a mail? I get a lot of junk mail. Why don't we get something that is actually inside my mailbox? Hello, ma'am, something's going on. I mean, I've been in and out, my sister's been in the hospital for days. Do you really think I'm going to go look? Direct, I am on direct payment, so I don't have to worry about paying my bill, but when I open it, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Yolanda, if you could please wrap up?
Yes, I know. That is my, can you work on get, having something in place? I know other cities do, they have an app that we will notify you, somebody come and knock on the door. I know my, there is a building going on, an ADU right in front of me, and the inspectors are there all the time.
Yolanda, if I may?
Yes.
Steve, can we work directly with Yolanda to see if we can remedy this situation, and maybe discuss it with her offline on this?
Yes, please, because eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, I cannot afford.
Understandable. Thank you very much, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Yolanda. Lauren Talbott?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Lauren Talbott, and I'm the Community Library Manager at the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library. Here are some upcoming programs. Families are invited to the Artie Loon Show on Wednesday, June 25th, at 3:00 p.m. at the Pico Rivera Library. Kids can enjoy magic, puppets, juggling, balloon sculptures, and more. Teens can celebrate Plastic Free July at the Pico Rivera Library on Wednesday, July 2nd, at 4:00 p.m. Teens will learn how to prevent marine pollution, plastic pollution, and they will decorate reusable water bottles. Both libraries will be closed on Friday, July 4th, for the holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Last speaker, we have Edgar Ortiz on item number sixteen. Edgar, please.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you so much. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, for the opportunity to address everyone in this meeting today. My name is Edgar Ortiz, I'm a resident of the City of California, here to speak in my capacity as Economic Justice Policy Manager for the California Immigrant Policy Center. We're a statewide advocacy organization that focuses on developing state legislation that advances inclusion for immigrant communities in different areas such as health and public benefits, legal services, and economic justice. We're here to speak today in strong support of the Legal Assistance Fund, which the City of Pico Rivera is proposing to help protect immigrant communities, which is a very important and timely matter that we're really appreciative for your leadership on. We would respectfully ask you to consider, though, to revisit the carve-outs that you're proposing, just to align the Assistance Fund with what other cities like Long Beach and Los Angeles, and also what the County of Los Angeles are doing. As I mentioned, this is a very timely issue, given that the previous presenter very aptly described that we're dealing with a very unprecedented situation, where communities across the board are being targeted in situations that borderline just straight-up racial profiling, and this is leading to a lot of committee members being detained, regardless of citizenship status, and this has lots of different impacts, including but not limited to impacts on our economy. Research shows that, on average, every time one family member is detained, it can lead to a drop of forty-seven to sixty-two percent in an, in an individual household's earnings. And we're seeing heads of household across the state being detained, which is having to lead to their significant others, or sometimes even children, having to step up to the plate and find some way to be able to bring income back into their household. And if this is allowed to continue to progress to what the federal government would like to see as its logical conclusion, it's going to lead to devastating economic impacts for our state. And so, we would definitely encourage you to stay the course and continue to push this forward, and we're hoping that this is just the start and not the end for being able to provide critical funding for individuals, as well as the organizations that are looking to provide this critical service at this time. And lastly, to the extent that it's to remain to the conversation around immigration, it sounds like you guys are already well-apprised on state legislation that's coming up regarding immigration enforcement. We also encourage anyone who's interested to look at AB 1136 by Assembly Member Ortega, which was just recently amended, and this one is going to provide additional protections for immigrant workers to be able to take time off to attend to immigration-related matters, as well as provide other protections like right of return and protections from employers letting workers go if they are detained by it. So, just wanted to offer that as an additional resource. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our, our public comments. We'll move into our agencies on tonight's agenda. City Council and Water Authority. City Council and Water Authority, we have a consent for items 2 to 18. It's moved by Mayor Pro Tem Camacho, second by Councilmember Laura. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Commissioner Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Commissioner Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Vice President Camacho, Mayor President Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Moving along, we've got a regular agenda item, number 19. It's the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program and Approval of the Operating Capital Budget for Fiscal Year 26, '27. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, this was an item that you heard last week, our proposal to adopt our operating budget and our...
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Camacho, second by Dr. Sanchez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Camacho, Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
City Manager, report.
At this time, Mayor, we will give an update, legislative update, next meeting.
Okay.
Just also, just wanted to quickly let you know that the staff did meet with the chamber today to discuss some of the things regarding how our business can be better prepared to deal with some of these immigration items.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to good of the order, AB 1234. Councilmember Laura?
Okay, just to get AB 1234 out of the way, or just some events that I attended, I did attend Karen Bass's press conference last week in regards to the riots, in regards to the immigration raids. It was a privilege to stand by her and to support. I also attended the Go-getters. I heard it wasn't the outcome that... So...
You missed your bet.
So for the record, I had an injury. I fell, which, which resulted in fractured ribs, which resulted in embolging this C4, C5, C6, which left me... Yes, yes, I have pending litigation, so I felt that in the best interest, it was best if I didn't play. So, but I was there for the first inning.
Yes, you were.
To support. You know, on a more, on a more serious matter, I wanted to talk just briefly about what we've seen. I'll just be very brief, because we've talked quite a bit. What we are witnessing with these so-called raids is utterly despicable. This is, this isn't about public safety. This is human hunting, targeting people who look a certain way, people who work, working hard, doing jobs others might see as beneath them. And it, to be honest, is just racial profiling. And it's unfortunately tearing our community apart, and it's tearing communities apart just across this country. I'm deeply troubled by the tactical gear, the carrying of assault rifles, the cocking of those assault rifles, and pointing them at unarmed residents, including women and children. This isn't law enforcement, it's intimidation, it's fear, and it really is disgusting. I'm not someone who supports the idea of defunding the police, but after what I've seen over the past few days, I get the argument now. What I am, someone who has recently been converted, is someone who believes that we need to demilitarize our police. Because what we saw at the Santa Fe Springs swap meet, federal agents moving in formation like they were walking through a village in Afghanistan, that is not how we treat people on American soil. That is not how we treat people in our neighborhoods. So when I reflect on what type of equipment the Sheriff's Department has, I feel that there should be some modification. Not modification in regards to their safety, because they do an incredibly difficult job, and they put themselves in harm's way to protect us. But I think we should pay special attention so that their gear does not look like the military. Doesn't have to be olive or tan. It could be a light blue, like the United Nations. You can still have all that gear to protect you, but it needs to be different. It needs to give a different perception. What we saw at that Santa Fe Springs swap meet was, was just, and then they made a video of it as if they were oper, as if they were special operators, as if what they were doing was incredibly difficult, or in some way incredibly dangerous. It wasn't. You were going to a swap meet where families were gathering and people were unarmed. And the only crime that they were committing is an administrative crime, it's not a criminal crime. But I can go on about how I feel. I know that our community wants more than words, they want action. We've been told that there are limits to what cities can do, but we are not powerless. As our mayor mentioned, we have joined a lawsuit challenging the legality of these warrantless operations. These raids violate core constitutional protections. The Fourth Amendment, which protects against unreasonable searches and seizures. These agents are detaining individuals and entering private property without judicial warrants. The Fifth Amendment, which guarantees due process. These people are being taken without being told their rights or given legal representation. The Fourteenth Amendment, which promises equal protection under the law, but that promise rings hollow when entire, entire communities are being targeted based upon race or appearance. So tonight, I'd like to introduce two items. The first item is a resolution by the city council, a language that will be drafted, hopefully and presented at our next city council meeting, condemning these raids, the racial profiling behind them, and the abuse of constitutional rights. Our city must make a clear and public stance by way of resolution. If I could please get a second? Thank you. The second item that I would like to introduce is something that the attorney touched upon, and it's educating our businesses and educating ourselves in regards to the rights of public, of private property. You know, there's a lot that has been said, and a lot of pen has been put to the racial inequities of the United States Constitution, right? But one premise of the Constitution that the Europeans brought when they came to, to the Americas, that they had experienced because their rights had been violated, is the rights of personal and private property, period. That's the bedrock of this foundation, from what I believe, and the bedrock of the Constitution. And we need to start to educate ourselves about the rights of private property. So with that, I'd like to propose that we start to issue this to our businesses. It is stop no ICE access in this business, private property, entry restricted by law. Notice to all law enforcement and immigration agents. And it reads, "This is a private business. You are not permitted to enter non-public areas of this business without a valid judicial warrant signed by a judge or magistrate. An ICE administrative warrant, a Form I-200 or I-205, does not authorize entry into public areas of this business. You may not question employees or search the premises without proper legal authority. All employees and visitors have the right to remain silent and the right to an attorney." The videos that I've seen where ICE agents have entered private property, and either the store owner stands up, or a member of the public stands up and says, "This is private property. You have to leave. We will call the police." Notice that they backed down, because that is right. It is private property, and they don't have the right to be there without a warrant. Remember, they are not murdered, these, these individuals haven't murdered someone in, in the street, and they haven't run in the business. It's not that type of crime. So, we need to get this out to our business community. So with that, I'd like to get a second for the city to move forward on reproducing this, on working with our Chamber of Commerce, on working with other entities so that these get into our businesses. I've already talked to a few. I talked to a dry cleaner, I talked to Salgado. They weren't aware of their rights. These, these agents need to go kick rocks, right? If they enter private property. May I get a second, please?
Before you do, do we need to, I, I like where you're going with this. Do we need to get any type of legal input before we disseminate on behalf of the city?
Yeah, we could definitely review. I know we've started the process, Rick has started the process with the chamber, but we definitely could follow up with that type of information.
I'll second pending review by our economic development director and attorney.
No, thank you, thank you very much. And with that, in closing, you know, we may not be able to rewrite federal immigration law, but we can control how we stand up for dignity, due process, and our neighbors. We need to be a city that just doesn't feel outraged, we need to be a city that acts on it. And I thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in regards to, and, 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 our city staff, our city attorney. You know, they reached out to our city attorney because he represents multiple cities, and he's known. And, and we were offered to be on, on, hopefully, that pending lawsuit. Whether it's victorious or not, I care less. But thank you.
Councilmember Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the public know that when we played the Go-getters in the last softball game a couple of days ago, they slaughtered us. I think the final score was 21 to 12, and, and I thought long and hard, and what can we do to vindicate ourselves? And we have an upcoming game against city staff, against our local Pico Rivera Sheriff's Department. And we have our acting captain, Captain Joe Hernandez, here. We've been ready, and we've been practicing so that we can hopefully win against you. And the game is on Thursday, the 26th, at Smith Park, at 3:00 p.m. up until 7:00 p.m. The Sheriff's Department has two teams. Pico Rivera, we're looking to see if we can have two teams as well, and then Walmart also has two teams. Walmart's gonna be providing food and t-shirts, and the sales of those items are gonna go toward the Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. So the public is welcome to join in the bleachers and watch these incredible tournaments, so to speak, between Pico Rivera staff, our Sheriff's Department staff, and Walmart staff, all fighting to win a championship amongst the three organizations. So, I welcome, again, everybody to come and enjoy the, the games. Again, a tournament from 3:00 to 7:00, Smith Park, Thursday at 6:00 p.m. And I know we got our council members, some of them will be cheering from the stands, and others will be playing on the game, and I'll try my best to, to hit a single. But in any case, that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Sanchez, please.
Thank you. In regards to AB 1234, I was invited and attended a tour and inspection of the metropolitan water, with, by the Metropolitan Water District of the Colorado River Aqueduct, which included the Hoover Dam, and encompassed a ton of information regarding water infrastructure, recycled water, agriculture, irrigation, so many things. One of my, one, one of my big bringbacks to the city is that maintenance is important because some of the plant facilities were over 93 years old, I believe. And so, in thinking of our new plant coming online, just thinking about how are we gonna maintain this for the long haul? Because we put so much investment in, in our water infrastructure, our new water line on the north side coming in, and just the importance of, of water, conservation, all of this is, is really important. So, we have a lot going on, but I, I was fortunate to be able to go, go and get that tour. I also wanted to share, fortunately, I wasn't able to go to the softball game. I sprained my ankle, had a little accident, so I will be there to cheer you on, or the sheriff's, whoever's winning. I'll be there to support. Unfortunately, I was, I'm not able to play. My apologies for being five minutes tardy. I did advise our, our city manager, but I am on jury duty right now. Being an elected official does not dismiss us from jury duty service, so I'm assigned to a court in downtown L.A., and it took me forever to get here, so my apologies for, for that. I did want to share that I, I am very aware of what's going on in our community. I'm a daughter of an immigrant farm worker. Although I'm a citizen, my dad is not a U.S. citizen. And he is documented, but he, I worry about him every day. And I, I want our residents to know that we are doing everything within our power to support not only our, our residents that are citizens, but also residents, no matter what their documentation status is. And I think today, our presentations, as well as our item 16, with the funding, we have a community benefit fund to support any, anyone that has been impacted by these ICE raids. And I believe there will be greater impacts to come. So we are looking into legal, jumping on lawsuits, and looking for resources that we can bring to our community. And so, for the resident that sent a message, I am not an embarrassed resident, I'm a proud resident, proud mother, and proud daughter of an immigrant. Yeah, my dad was born in Mexico, and I want to say that we're doing everything within our power to, to support our residents and citizen or, or none. I also wanted to share, make a request. I've heard from two businesses in the city, restaurants, that they have low attendant, or low dining, people are not coming in to eat as much. I don't know if this is a result of the fear of the immigration raids, or just people not going out to eat. And I want to request perhaps our economic development director. I know at one point during COVID, we had the CDBG funds available for mini-grants for some of our business owners that were impacted. I don't know if we still have that opportunity or any funding allowed in that pocket of money, but I know that several of our, our restaurants have, the small businesses have chosen to lock their doors, or have chosen not to open, or are experiencing a lack of, lack of patrons coming to visit their, their restaurants. So I've heard of at least two that, that have, have had this impact over this past month. So if we can look into, I'll, I'll share with you the, the two specific restaurants, but any businesses that are being impacted, for whatever reason, if we can look into those, please. Do I need a second for that?
No.
No?
Look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Camacho?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do want to say that I, I did play at the Go-getters. I added no value.
That's not true.
We did, we did get our butts kicked by our seniors, and, you know, it is what it is. But, but it was fun. It was fun, you know, to cheer my, my fellow colleagues from the city on, but it was great. It's always fun to, you know, there'll be a next time.
You missed the chance where he gave me a, Mayor Pro Tem, he was going from here to the wall, and he just missed a shot by that much.
Should I dive? Should I dive? No, do not dive. You're gonna get injured, you know, but, but it was fun. As relates to CIACA Agency Southeast Area Animal Control Authority that I sit on, we did have approved an MOU at the SEIU, the employees, recently, that was approved. I wanted to highlight item number six, the dog park, something that, you know, with everything going on, you know, we just don't want to miss it. It's long in the making of creating our first dog park in our city. This is obviously the direction to move, moving to approve it. I think it's gonna be great for our community, and thank those, we'll have the time to thank that have, were instrumental from the community to bring this forward, so want to make sure that we highlighted the dog park, that amongst many other projects that are forthcoming with us. And just lastly, just adding, in relation to the conversation that we're having regarding immigration enforcement, in addition to the comments that I made earlier, the questions that I had with the speaker, you know, you know, for, there's so many viewpoints in this, and what I tell folks, at least my perspective, you know, we got to a point where this immigration enforcement, this is no longer about policy, it's no longer about politics, it's no longer about party, Democrat, Republican, independent. We're a community that supports each other and respects each other's viewpoints and whatever you choose to support. But what we're seeing today, and the level of enforcement, and if you're going after individuals who have criminal backgrounds, then that's one category, but what we've all seen, and when people say that, well, these are folks that just came in a couple of years ago, no, the majority of the folks that we've seen are people who've been here for 30 years, 20 years, half-family. We just recently learned about the case of those two individuals who, with their dad was, we all saw being, being hit and, and repeatedly, and their sons are marine individuals, they're in the U.S. military. So we, the actions that we're seeing... So we, the actions that we're seeing are despicable, as we're saying, so, again, it's no longer about party, policy, or politics. This is about humanity and what's right and what's wrong. And I stand, and I, as an individual, tend to wanna stand the side of right, a right for humanity. And if you think this approach in just racial profiling, there's no way to justify otherwise. If you think that, you know, hunting down brown people in the streets just because you look like you might not be documented, if you think that's right, God bless your soul, because there's some evilness in you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I too had a chance to attend the Go-getters softball game, and I'm just gonna quote one of the commentaries, "When you don't respect your outsiders, you get spanked." And that's what happened. That's what happened, we got spanked, twenty-one to twelve. But you know, it was just too many errors, and we need to practice, bottom line. I did too attend the Pio Pico Women's Club, they had a throwback going into the nineteen-fifties, and let me just put on my glasses to read this, because they did an outstanding job. It was polka dots, poodles, pink ladies, bazooka, bubble gum, and Cracker Jacks. Wow, did they have that facility. When you walk in there, it took you back to the fifties. I was literally lost in the fifties with the Pio Pico Women's Club. So kudos to them on an outstanding fundraiser. I too want to acknowledge Victor for the oath, the part, the collaboration with Oath to Country Foundation, with Home Depot, with NASA, and, and sprucing up a Vietnam Veterans Ex-Terrier Armors Facility, and getting them ready for the summer. And City Manager, Mayor Pro Tem, but Victor, you guys did an outstanding job with that, and hopefully we can continue that collaboration and reach out to more veterans, and maybe even senior citizens down the line. So Mayor Pro Tem, thank you, amongst other things, for coming out on Saturday morning. City Manager and Victor, kudos, job well done in that area.
And so, Mayor, if I may, our deputies, a couple of our deputies came out too, so please thank them.
Yes, that was Rhodes and Carla. Yes, I'm gonna give them a shout-out as well.
Thank you.
Who are out there as part of venue. It's really a collaborative effort, you see veterans, the, the community rallies, and comes together to support our veterans. We appreciate everyone's support. I want to give a shout-out to Gabriel Castorino. Gabriel Castorino has his day-to-day assignments, but when you look at what's been transpiring over the last three weeks here in the City of Pico Rivera, the messaging that Gabriel puts together to get out to our residents is critical. And so Gabriel, shout-out, keep up the good work in messaging our residents so they know what's transpiring here in the City of Pico Rivera. And finally, last but not least, I want to give a shout-out to my granddaughter who's visiting from Arizona, Jessa Garcia. It's good to see you, Jessa. You picked a good meeting to attend. But with that, that concludes, we're gonna close in memory of Manny Guerrero. He was a former businessman, longtime resident, former RBA coach and parishioner of St. Mary's Anne's. And we'll go ahead and adjourn at 8:02.